Call to order, Town of Fairfield zoning board of appeals, March 2, 2023. For opening an executive session, we have a couple of matters on the agenda. First, its approval of minutes from Thursday, February 2, 2023. Entertained a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Sir, a second?
Jane, second.
Thank you, Jane. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? None, motion carries. Second item is approval of secretary's fees. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Sir, a second?
Jane, second.
Thank you, Jane. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, bring it to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries. We'll reconvene the working session after completion of our public hearing today. And just so everyone knows, there's one item on our continued docket that is further continued to April, and that is 2268 Fairfield Beach Road. That is not going forward today, that's going to be continued to April. And earlier on, there were two items that were on the agenda, that's nine and 10, Westway. Those have been withdrawn, we're only going up through eight on the regular docket today for our agenda, which is 248 Sunny Home Drive. Give it five minutes, and then I'll open up our public hearing, which is to open up at three o'clock. Call to order, Town of Fairfield zoning board of appeals, our public hearing, March 2, 2023. When I call a matter, at that time, the applicant or his or her agent will present the case, come up to the podium, give your name and address, and during your presentation, and only during your presentation, should you present things that you want the board to consider. Please don't try to give us things, or give Mr. Decker any, for the official file, any documents while I'm calling the case, that interferes with the board. We want to make sure that the call is accurate. So during your presentation, if you wanted to consider anything, bring it up at that time. Hopefully you have petitions, or they're already in the file. After the applicant speaks, I'll ask anyone that is in favor of that application to come forward and speak. If anyone who wants to speak, if you're not here present, I do allow people to comment remotely, just let me know when you're remote if you have a comment in favor or opposition, and I will take it at the appropriate time. If there is anyone that speaks in favor, once that's done, I will allow anyone that has opposition to that application to come forward and speak as well. If there is any opposition, I then allow the applicant or his or her agent to address the opposition comments, just to the applicant or agent. If there is opposition to your application, please, at that time, it's more rebuttal, it's not a time to speak to your entire application and repeat yourself, it is to address the comments that were made in opposition. The meeting is being taped, and that's required by state law to create a record, that's why I gave some instructions, so we don't have any interference with the record. And only one person can speak at a time. Anyone who does speak, if you're present, you come up to the microphone, podium and microphone and speak at that time, give your name and address. If you're remote, let me know, I will call upon you, and I will take it in order. As I said, if you're in favor of the application, I take you after the applicant. If you're opposing the application, I would take you after any comments that are made in favor of the application. Keep in mind, this is zoning board of appeals, most of the applications here relate to a request to vary or adjust our regulations, planning and zoning regulations. So your comments, whether you're in favor or against it, should be made to that. With that point in mind, I reserve my right as chairman to restrict your comments at any time. Any applicants or interested individuals, after the public hearing, we may take a short break, depending on how long the public hearing goes, and then once returned, we'll reconvene our working session. At that time, we'll be voting on each matter that goes forward today. So if the matter does go forward, we will be voting today. There's five voting members of the zoning board of appeals. In order for your application to be granted, you need a super majority, meaning you need at least four of us to vote in favor of your application. If you are interested and cannot stay, don't worry, nothing is held against you for leaving. But I think it's important that you do stay, because during our voting and discussions, we might make some comments that would be of interest to you. So it's important for you to stay if you can. If you cannot stay, just contact zoning office tomorrow later to find out what happened on your application. If an application for a waiver is granted, it's not going to be valid until it's recorded on the land records. In order to do that, you must bring or send a check in the amount of $60 made payable to the Town of Fairfield, and bring it or send it to the zoning office Wednesday or later following the meeting for proper recording. Any waiver which involves new construction, whether it's, or any construction, whether it's new, an addition or an alteration, will require an as-built prior to the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. As our agenda, I'm going to be calling this now. The first item we had was on the continued docket, that's continued 5, 2268 Fairfield Beach Road, that has been further continued to April 6, 2023. Now on to our general docket, our first item that we have is number one on the general docket, that's 186 Hillside Road, map 176, parcel 59. Petition of Marsh Real Estate LLC for a variance of zoning regulation section 12.5.5 to reduce the street line setback from 70 feet, currently 31.9 feet, proposing 31.9 feet in section 12.7.6.4 to reduce the side property line setbacks from an adjacent residential district from 30 feet, currently 18.6 feet and 7.2 feet, proposing 18.6 feet and 7.2 feet. Permission to construct a second floor addition premises, NDD zone. Attorney Fallon, this is you, correct?
It is, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm John Fallon, I'm an attorney in Fairfield, and I thank you for your courtesy in allowing me to appear today remotely. I look forward to seeing you all in person again very soon. I'm representing Dr. Marsh and his wife, who are the principals of the LLC. They in fact acquired the Greenfield Hill Animal Hospital and the structure we're talking about today from Andrew's father in January of 2020. The veterinary building is there and has been for a long time, also there since 1938 is the residential cottage that we're talking about, and it has been used and occupied as a residence since 1938. Recently, the elderly lady who resided there passed away, and so it has been vacant for a few months. Dr. and Mrs. Marsh felt that it was the appropriate time to take an opportunity to renovate this residential space so that it's safe and comfortable for any future occupants. In that regard, the roof, as I've indicated in my material, is past due for replacement, it has a high risk of failure, and they intend to replace it, and also fix water damage that has occurred over time. There are significant issues on the second story bedroom that I'll address, and that they wish to address as part of the proposal. The second story bedroom only has a ceiling height of six feet, so that doesn't allow for any comfortable or safe living, actually, nor that it has a bathroom. Indeed, the only bathroom in the structure is located on the first floor and comprises only 34 square feet. The stairs leading to the second story are very narrow, and certainly are not code compliant, and raise safety concerns as well. And in addition, it's so cramped in the second floor, there's no opportunity for an HVAC system to incorporate central air conditioning, which they'd like to have done, so that again, the safe air quality can be provided for our future tenants. So what we propose to address all of that is raising the second story ceiling to a height of seven and a half feet. This will allow for replacement of that cramped stairway and bathroom that I spoke about before, also allow room for the installation of air conditioning. The widening, the stairway especially, I think will benefit safety considerations, and allow better and efficient access to that upper floor area. We're basically asking for permission to raise the second story height by approximately five feet. That's the only alteration that is really being proposed, exterior alteration of the building, other than the replacement of some windows. After the work is completed, should you approve it, the height of the renovated cottage will still be only approximately 20 feet, well within the height requirements of the zone, which are 30 feet. In order to facilitate this, we seek two variances, as the call indicates, section 12.5.5, in order to reduce the minimum street line setback for a building with ground floor residential occupancy located on a parcel with multiple buildings from 70 feet to 31.9 feet. Obviously, it goes without saying that there not going to be actually any change in the location of the existing building, which has been occupied and utilized and situated as it is now for a period of some 84 years. Similarly, section 12.7.6.4, we request a variance of the side property line setback from the adjacent residence district from 30 feet to the presently existing 18.6 feet and 7.2 feet. Again, this is an existing condition, and there won't be any change in the historic footprint of this structure. From a legal perspective, as you know, you look to section 8-6, and must determine if what we proposed will have any negative substantial effect on the comprehensive zoning plan, and whether there are factors involving the case that establish hardship. With regard to the first aspect of the test, as the board knows, and I cite in my material the Egan case, it's held that if the use to be made after a variance is granted, is a permitted use under the zoning regulation, then the first part of the test is met. Here, there's not going to be any change in the historic use of the property as a residence, which is permitted under the zoning regulations, and in this case, has been ongoing since 1938. The second floor addition will allow for much-needed repairs, as I've indicated, and enhancements to this dwelling unit to improve convenience and safety for its occupants. We believe that the aesthetic design here has been modestly handled to ensure that it will continue to harmonize with the character of the property and the neighborhood. And Dr. and Mrs. Marsh, as is their custom, obviously contacted all of the neighbors. They value and always have very much the relationship they've been able to maintain and maintain with their neighbors, and that great relationship persists here, and you have before you, as part of your record, a petition that they have circulated wherein our adjacent neighbors and neighbors from somewhat more distant areas are all speaking in endorsement of this proposal. With regard to the hardship aspect of things, our Connecticut courts have indicated many times that the location of a pre-existing non-conforming structure creates a profit basis for a finding of hardship. That's the Kelly and Niklon and O'Neil cases that I cite in my material. It's the fact, obviously, of this historic location of the existing dwelling and its already non-conforming status as to the second story that raises the need for these technical variances based upon the addition of some height to the second story. As I've indicated, the proposed construction will not result in any change in the existing setback, no further encroachment, but simply required because that is where the building is now, and that is the hardship basis based upon those cases. So in summary, these are technical variances, but they will allow us to renovate and improve the second story of this existing cottage, that's going to allow for much more safe, comfortable, inhabitable space in this second floor area. And we hope you will agree that the application does meet the technical standards of Connecticut general statutes 8-6, in that there would be no adverse impact associated with this to the comprehensive plan, and the location of the existing legally protected pre-existing structure does constitute a hardship basis for the granting of these setback variances that we request. So be pleased to answer any questions you might have, and again, appreciate your opportunity to let you, let me speak to you remotely today.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. Does the board have any questions for Attorney Fallon?
No.
Hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, here or remote? Is there anyone that has opposition to the application, here at town hall or remote? Okay, we're going to close the hearing on number one, 186 Hillside Road. Thank you, Attorney Fallon.
Thank you very much.
Our next item that we have is number two, that's 57 Brookdale Road, map 79, parcel 837. Petition of Lisa Fortuna for a variance of the zoning regulation section 5.2.4.3 to reduce a side setback for an accessory structure greater than 15 feet in height from 10 feet, currently 4.2 feet, proposing 4.2 feet. Permission to construct a second floor to an existing detached garage premises, a zone. I think, is Mr. Raymond presenting this?
I have, Lisa.
Okay.
I can present.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Fortuna.
Hi, I'm Lisa Fortuna, owner of 57 Brookdale Road, Fairfield. My husband's also on the call, Ken Wakanowitz. We found we were short on storage space, and so we felt it was appropriate to add a half-story over our garage. The problem we faced is the existing structure is slightly over the setback by a matter of several inches. I don't recall the exact amount, I think Jason can help me with that. So we are requesting a variance to build over the existing structure, half-story. Our architect has, Jason has designed a beautiful design, and we've shared our plans with all of our neighbors, and we've gotten all of the signatures. So, any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Fortuna. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Fortuna? Or I know we have, I think Jason is here, so if the board has questions for Jason, we could ask him as well. All right, hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, 57 Brookdale Road? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application, 57 Brookdale Road? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close the hearing on 57 Brookdale Road. Thank you, Ms. Fortuna.
Thanks.
Our next item that we have is number three, 22 Partridge Lane, map 177, parcel 106. Petition of Miguel Morales for a variance of the zoning regulation section 5.2.4 to reduce the sum of two sideline setbacks in 20 feet, currently 20.6 feet, proposing 19.2 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase the total lock coverage from 20%, currently 20%, proposing 25.1%. Permission to construct a one-story addition and detached shed premises, a zone. Okay, go ahead, come on up here, sir.
Hello, my name is Miguel Morales, I reside at 22 Partridge Lane, Fairfield. I am requesting to construct a 10-by-14 shed in the rear of my house. Excuse me, I'm shorted on the storage, currently using my garage to storage my lawnmower, snow blower, and so. I am also requesting to construct a 7-by-10 addition, consistent of a proposed dining room and a pod room in the first floor. The reason why we're requesting for a new addition is families getting bigger, we have a second kid on the way, and my wife and I work from home, so we need more room in the house. That's it.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Morales. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Morales? Yes, go ahead, Jane.
Hi. So when you filled out all the papers for the application, you were given a question and said, what is a hardship?
Okay.
And it explains that the hardship is not about your personal needs, and it has to be tied to the property, so can you maybe talk a little bit more about hardship?
Yeah, sure. So since I'm doing it by myself, and I didn't have anyone representing me, a lawyer, I was unaware of it. Yeah, so the reason when we purchased the house, it was always kind of short on storage, and it was always small for us, so we feel as, we kind of, we're in the lack of room in the house, you know, especially for a big family. We just have nowhere to store, you know, store our stuff around the house. So we feel as, you know, by requesting this, it'll help us with our storage.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Morales, why do you need to bump out that little addition that you're doing out from the existing structure?
It was a design by the architect, just to, I guess aesthetically, it'll look better, to tie into the existing house, design that's in the house, since we wanted to construct a new dining room to add more room to the existing part of the house, since we don't have a dining room.
Okay.
So it was more of aesthetic design by the architect.
Any other questions in the board? All right, let me just see, you can stay there for a moment. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, 22 Partridge Lane? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application, 22 Partridge Hearing none. Okay, we're going to close the hearing on 22 Partridge Lane. Thank you, sir. Next item that we have is number four. Let me organize myself. 1499 Post Road, map 180, parcel 86. Petition of RK Fairfield LLC for a variance of zoning regulation 30.2, reduce the distance between two cafes from 1,500 feet, proposing 300 feet and 410 feet. Permission to establish a cafe permit, premises, CDD zone. And who was presenting that? Do we have?
I'm Yardar Nygaard. I'm, thanks, I'm the owner of Nordic Fish, we're the applicant.
Okay.
So yeah, we're requesting a cafe liquor license. We don't qualify for a state full restaurant liquor license because you don't have the required 400 square feet indoor seating. We do with a patio, but they don't recognize that. So we wish to expand our indoor dining, you know, our hardship is that it's difficult competitively when everyone else around you has a liquor license to get you to come and sit down and eat. So we do have signatures from both the nearest cafe license holders, who both have no opposition to our, to our application, and who feel it will help with the collective draw of downtown area. Additionally, we feel it is in lockstep with practices of downtown to have cafe licenses for liquor.
Okay, all right. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Nygaard? Okay, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that has opposition to the application, 1499 Post Road, Nordic Fish? Okay, we're going to close the hearing. Thank you, Mr. Nygaard.
Are you missing a letter from the other?
I do, I have, I have the other letter.
There's only one in the file.
Yeah.
We'll open the hearing and put that back in, close the hearing.
Always something. All right, our next, next item that we have, number five, 126 Old Post Road, map 141,
parcel 4. Petition of Beverly Vaneur for a variance of the zoning regulation section 5.2.4.3 to expand the existing dormers and to reduce the side and rear setbacks from 10 feet, currently 5 feet and 5 feet, proposing 5 feet and 5 feet. Permission to expand the existing dormers to create a home office to a detached garage premises, a zone. That's Vaneur?
Yep.
All right, go ahead, ma'am.
Hello, good afternoon, Chairman and fellow commissioners. I am Beverly Vaneur. I am the owner and resident of 126 Old Post Road, Fairfield. I am here seeking a variance, extending my dormers to my already approved and permit granted detached garage with a storage, as I like to call it, a lot above. My hardship is that with a new measurement for height being measured to the midpoint of the ridge beam and the dormer eave, my setback has changed. I am now required to maintain a 10-foot side and rear setback rather than a 4-foot, which I am already in compliance, being 5 feet away. My side adjacent neighbors at 144 Old Post Road, as well as the other neighbors, have signed my petition approving of my change. Bear in mind that my rear neighbors, the neighbors at the back, are commercial entities, including duchess, fast food with a 19-hour drive-through, a liquor store, Dunkin' Donuts, and a mattress store. We are separated by buffer land of approximately 40 feet with trash compactors and commercial dumpsters overflowed. And as you can see from the architectural plan and A2 survey, the overall footprint of the garage does not change. The height of the existing ridge does not change, just the width of the dormers that are already constructed. I, for all that matters here, I do comply with the primary street line, as the garage is approximately 120 feet away from Old Post Road. I do understand that hardship has to be tied to the particular circumstances, characteristics, I should say, of the property, and not my personal need to have it as a home office. I do encourage all questions. I, please feel free to ask any questions, as I know I cannot comment during the executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaneur. Does the board have any questions? Go ahead, Jane.
I'm not quite clear on how this all happened, so.
Oh.
You got a building permit.
Yes.
But now because somebody went and measured.
Oh, no, no, okay, no, okay, let me explain. I don't know how much you want to know, but.
Yeah.
I'll tell you everything. Okay, I was granted a permit in 2021. I started building, and at that time, I realized, wow, I need more space than I intended, and the dormers were just kind of not giving me any room. And so I said, I need to call the buildings and say, what, can we do this? And I came to buildings, and they looked at my H2 survey and the architecture plan, it's already in the record, and they said, you can do it, but you need to have calculations, like LVL, laminated veneer lumber, I wanted to get that right. And I needed to have those calculations from an engineer, which we did, from West End, as an engineering department, so we provided that with the schematic of what we wanted, and that was approved. So that's done, so I started building. And I realized I had to go to maps or something else, that map that I was zoning, and he saw the photos, because I showed him photos of the windows, and he was like, oh, that's bigger. And I said, wow, so I guess I need a variance. So essentially, yeah, so I said, do I need a variance? I actually asked him, because I feel as if, I did not know that at the time, that the buildings gave me to go, but apparently the buildings were supposed to send me over.
Two steps forward and one step. Okay, is that it?
Yes, so that's where I am today. And you can see from the architectural plan, that obviously the garage is setback, and even though I'm, you know, 5 feet away from my neighbor's property, I'm about 20 feet from the, you know, where the house or garage starts, because we have a driveway separating. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Vaneur, we have one letter in opposition, I'm going to give you an opportunity to comment on that, but I like to do it efficiently, I want to see if there's going to be anything, anyone else, okay?
I understand.
But first, I ask to see, so stay right there for now, is to see if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application, 126 Old Post Road. Okay, now, for people in opposition, I'm just going to note for the record, which we do have, the board does have, it's a letter from the OPRAA members, Steve Ramsey and Jones, having opposition to the application, and that's part of our record already. Is there anyone else that likes to, that wants to speak in opposition to this application? All right, hearing no one else, Ms. Vaneur, now I'm going to give you an opportunity to address the opposition here. And remember, you don't have to restate what you said.
I understand.
Try to highlight some of the comments there, right, ma'am?
Yes, thank you. I was given that letter from Ann Jones when I was walking in today, so I've not had an opportunity to look entirely over, because it's a very long letter, very detailed letter, but I do understand that she has some grievance with my property in particular, and when I've gone before the HDC, she has made comments, and she's written letters. So whatever her, what I've reviewed, you know, while I was here, it has nothing to do with zoning and board, it has to do with what she believes is not keeping in detail or the, the structure of, of the area, which is interesting, because that house that I bought in 2005 was considered blight, it was disgusting. It was not repaired in like 40 or 50 years, and so the owner that I bought it from, he could have gotten at least $150,000, but that was 2005, when everything was gravy. And he knew that at that time, investors wanted to demolish it and build a new house. And the historic district could do nothing about that, they cannot prevent you from building a home. They cannot prevent you from building a home. This is what the United States is great for, that we can respect property rights and property interests. So this house was completed in 1849. I am the fourth owner. That's how long people have owned that home. So I'm, I've not changed the actual 1849 structure. I've not expanded on it, I've not reduced window sizes that faces Old Post Road. I've kept with the detail and the character of Old Post Road. I am entitled to build a garage, which she doesn't believe I am, Ann Jones, and it's all the way in the back, you can barely see it. And I do want to note that it's alleged that Ann Jones, that does reside at 363 Old Post Road, which is a residential one-family, that that entity is being used, that residence is being used as a multifamily. That's the allegation. So you can address it with her, but I'm really.
That's really not far for us.
Oh, I understand. Neither is her letter regarding the, the actual character of the garage either. But, thank you.
Well, I think, you know, Jane asked the question, I think, is one of the, which is how did we get here?
I understand.
And I think you've answered that, and that's one of the oppositions as well, cart before the horse type situation.
Yes.
And you've answered how you come, and how you now before this board, by you going in and asking other questions and then inquiring about a variance and then coming here after, as soon as you found out to get a variance.
Right, because exactly when I did prior to constructing and extended the dorm, I did add the building. I wanted to know if we had rooms, if we could do it, and they needed to have structural calculations to ensure that we could do that. And so we provided that with LVLs, so two by, we had two, two by 14 LVLs, which necessarily, it wasn't necessary, because we got two, two by 10s, or we wanted to ensure that the structure was, you know, equipped and strong. So that's, we did not know at that time that we needed to have a variance to take after the fact.
Okay. All right, well, you're here.
I am here.
You're in the right spot.
Yes.
So we're going to, any questions on the rebuttal for Ms. Vaneer, the board? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing now, we'll be taking it up later. Thank you, you're all set. I have two, number five. Next, one's for you, is number six, 164 Applegate Road, map 46, parcel 211, petition of Erin and Thomas Toller for variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the sideline and rear line setbacks from 15 feet and 30 feet, currently 13 feet and 32.5 feet, proposing 8 feet and 19.2 feet to the house and 18.5 feet to the deck, and section 5.2.5 to increase the lot coverage from 15%, currently 12.4%, proposing 17.9%. Permission to construct two-story additions in rear deck, premises R3 zone. Okay, come on up.
Sorry, before she could see you, I did not see the signature.
Oh, yeah, you can give that to Mr. Decker. Yeah, we'll put that in, that's all right.
Hi, everyone. I'm Erin Toller at 164 Applegate Road. This is my husband's, like, time to shine, except he's out of the country, so I'm going to just bumble through.
You'll probably do better.
So basically, we are proposing to add 938 square feet of living space. Right now, our house is currently 1567. We have a six-year-old and an eight-year-old, so we're looking to add a little bit more living space. The initial build will replace a 240-foot square foot deck with a 362-foot square foot, 362 square foot living room, or family room, sorry, and then later we plan to add 576 feet of additional living space, which would be a master suite. So in terms of the hardship, we basically already have a non-conforming lot. So when this is built, now there's parcel one and parcel two. So in 1977 this happened, the house is built in the 50s, so it was, our lot is now 1525, 15252. So right now, we are, have that, as well as a 30-foot setback from a waterway that is directly next to us. So the placement of our house is already skewed to the south. So for the, to the variance, we're looking for the setback from the side property and one for the rear property, and then the maximum, like you mentioned, the maximum building lot coverage. So because of the topographical conditions, we had our architect design this so that everything is kind of keeping with the neighborhood and minimizing construction and time disturbance.
Yes, I think, Ms. Toller. Board have any questions for Ms. Toller, and you have your signatures in our package.
Yes, I do.
All right, any questions? All right, I'm going to find out if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the Is there anyone in opposition to the application, 164 Applegate Road? All right, going to close the hearing. Thank you, Ms. Toller.
Thank you.
Next item that we have is number seven, and that is 857 Bronson Road, map 228, parcel 19, petition of James Yakone for a variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.4, to reduce the street line and rear line setbacks from 50 feet and 40 feet, currently 23.3 feet and 54.2 feet, proposing 44.4 feet and 36.5 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase the lot coverage and total floor area from 10% and 20%, currently 11.1% and 16.4%, proposing 16.1% and 21.9%. Permission to construct one and a half story addition, premises double A zone. And who's presenting?
Jim Yakone, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much to you and members of the board. I'm here with my wife Sally. So that house, it was built, at 857 Bronson, was built in the year 1700, and it obviously predates the setback lines. The staircase to the second story in all the bedrooms is very steep and narrow. The original staircase, obviously not the code, and then the ceiling, it's the original Dutch colonial, so the ceiling slopes in as you approach the top of the flight of steps, leading to all the bedrooms. I'm 57 years old, I'm a veteran retiree and a military veteran with mobility and experience in limited mobility through a replaced knee, some lower back injuries and fractures, and TBI. So staying in the house is really important for us in the foreseeable future. We're trying to kind of minimize and eliminate the necessity to use the stairs as much as possible, and our intent is to build a first-floor master suite to help us, to help me specifically as I get older. And with us, I have Clark Construction. We hired Clark, and Ross is with us, the owner of the company, because they have a lot of expertise at preserving the historic integrity of homes this age. And that's it, subject to your questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yakone. And does anyone have any questions here for Mr. Yakone or individual from Clark? Go ahead, Jane.
Hi, how are you? I'm looking at the drawings, and the plans that you have submitted don't show the rest of the house. It's just, you're just showing the addition. So are, what else is on the first floor of the existing house, other rooms?
Yeah, the first floor, so the total house is about 2,000 square feet. On the first floor, you have the living room and what used to be the old dining room, and then the kitchen area, as well as a bathroom downstairs. And then upstairs are the bedrooms.
Okay, so there's no existing ground floor, first floor bedroom in the, you know, the original part of the house?
That's correct, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, the Yakones or Clark Construction and Company? All right, hearing no other questions. Is there anyone wishes to speak in favor of the application?
Yes. Hi, if you can hear me, this is, I'm one of the homeowners of the adjacent property at 879 Bronson Road, and just want to pile on here and, you know, share my support for this, for this adjustment and for the ongoing project or the planned project. Jim and Sally have been phenomenal neighbors for the few years that they lived next door. I can personally vouch for the, the concerns and challenges with the current home, seeing as that home was previously owned by my in-laws, so I'm very familiar with the home, and excited by the plans that they have and what they're going to do to upgrade this property and this house, which is a gem to the town of Fairfield, which has to be, has to be one of the oldest houses in town, going back to 1700 with Moses Diamond. And, yeah, just excited for them and very supportive of what their plan is here.
And just for the record, you're Mr. Najjar, and you're at 879 Bronson, correct?
Yes.
And you are the property that's closest to that proposed addition?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that has opposition to the application, 857 Bronson Road? All right, hearing no other comments, we're going to close the hearing on 857 Bronson Road. Thank you, gentlemen, and Mr. Yakone, thank you for your service as well. Next item that we have is number eight, 248 Sunny Home Drive, map 139, parcel 389, petition of Thomas Montelli for variance of the zoning regulations, section 5.2.5, to increase the lot coverage from 15%, currently 8.5%, proposing 17%. Permission to construct a new single-family dwelling with poolhouse, premises R3 zone. Attorney Fallon, I think you're taking this one?
Mr. Chairman, and for the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm representing Mr. Montelli. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, good afternoon. Again, I thank you for letting me appear remotely. I believe Mr. Montelli is with you in person today, so he can wave or do whatever he wants, but he is our client and the property owner. Also joining me today remotely are, is Jay Vallade of Mark Finley Architects, and he'll make a brief presentation momentarily. Tom and Kelsey Montelli are longtime residents of Fairfield. They have three young children, Juliet is five, Lockwood is two, and Liam joined us one week ago. So Tom, he looks a little tired sitting in front of you, has a good, good excuse, I assure you. What they wish to do is to construct what I think is a beautifully beautiful new home on this property that will be for them, you know, their lifetime home. That's how Tom first described it to me. They love this town, they love this very special neighborhood, which Sunny Home is, and this is the place that they want to raise their children to adulthood. They retain the services of Mark Finley Architects, and Mark and Jay Vallade, who you'll be hearing from, have worked diligently on the proposal, and he's going to give you an overview of that from an architectural standpoint in a moment. I just want to focus on the property, because this is a classic hardship situation based upon the unique shape of this lot. The property is located in the R3 zoning district. For want of a better word, very similar to a flag lot. I know you have copies of the site plan in front of you, so you may want to refer to that. Jay, I don't know if you want to, if you could screen share and put the site plan up for a minute. If not, I know the commissioners have it in front of them. Okay, thank you, Jim. So what you have here is a lot that, as I said, has elements of a flag lot. It has street frontage, as you can see, on both Sunny Side, Sunny Home, and Mariner's The lot lines are uneven, as you can see, so what I refer to as the flag pole begins to pinch under 50 feet, just before the site opens up to what we call the flag portion of the lot. This is important, as I'll discuss in a minute, based upon how we define lot area. Where the lot originates from Mariner's Way, you'll see that it is compliant in terms of frontage at 50.10 feet, but for whatever reason, as it narrows down, that 50.10 or 50.1 shrinks below 50%. The lot is very large, it's one of the larger lots, certainly oversized for the district. It comprises 33,410 square feet. And I know the commission or the board is very, very familiar with Sunny Home Drive. It's got to be one of the more unique streets in Fairfield. At the end of what I refer to as the ellipse that circulates around a small park area, there is, at each end of the ellipse, there's a very significant turn, which essentially amounts to a U-turn as you go through Sunny Home Drive. The site frontage here is located at the beginning of that turn, and the design of the street is what causes a very odd and unique property layouts for the properties that are located at each end, like ours is. These properties at the end were created with very sharp and angled property lines, where the properties have a very narrow frontage on Sunny Home, as you can see, and then expand in width as they move farther away from Sunny Home Drive. The site contains, as you can see, one of these very sharp angled property lines along its northwestern side of the property, which intersects the rear property line. While this is very usable space for the site, the reason I'm dwelling upon it is that, based upon the definition of lot area in our, in our regulations, that lot area for purposes of computing coverage cannot be allowed to include properties which have a width of less than 50% of the minimum required lot square at the intersection of the two property lines with an angle less than 60 degrees. What this means is when you look at this map, on this site, in an area in the northwest corner, unfortunately meets that definition for exclusion, and that eliminates 847 square feet from the area calculation. Similarly, if you look at the area of the site that extends toward Mariner's Way, this is what I referred to before as the flagpole portion of the lot. At Mariner's Lane, the site has a street frontage, as I indicated before, at 50.1%. That is compliant with regard to the lot area requirements that I just referred to. However, and this may have been due to error that occurred or some other factor when these lots were historically laid out, when the lot lines were created for the site, one of the lot lines perpendicular to Mariner's Way had a very slight angle, so that by the end of, the flagpole was I referred to it, the width of the site is less than 50% of the required lot width. There again, due to the definition of lot area under the regulations, as I've described them, that portion of the site cannot be counted in the calculation of lot area for purposes of coverage compliance. And in this case, that's a very significant 4,724 square feet. So that at the end of the day, although the lot itself contains 34,410 square feet of land, only 27,839 square feet can be counted towards lot area, and this is directly due to the provisions of the regulations as they're imposed to this odd-shaped lot that really is driven by the unique street layout and design and the angles that were originally created when the lot was established. Having said all of that, it's interesting to point out that the variance that we seek is only 2%, so that we are, we could very well be accommodated if, obviously if we could include that lot area, but here, again, notwithstanding the significant hardship associated with the shape of the lot, we're only looking for a variance, requesting a variance of 2%. The other thing I think is very important to point out is, notwithstanding all of these other issues relative to the lot, we will be in total compliance with all other provisions of the zoning regulations, most importantly being FAR. Our FAR, notwithstanding the diminution in lot area occasioned by the provisions of the regulations, will still be a very compliant, just above 24%, and the zone obviously allows FAR of 30%. So the house, in terms of its overall design, as Jay will talk about in a minute. So the, the, the house in terms of its overall design, as Jay will talk about in a minute, certainly is consistent with the character of the lot, the, the provisions of the zoning regulations, and I would say, as I'll elaborate on in the legal aspects of things, the, the, the nature of the neighborhood. But before I, I discuss and get into the legal analysis, I'd like Jay Vallade of Mark Finley Architects, just to give you a brief overview of the site plan in terms of what we're doing and where, and also the time and attention that has been taken to design this, this house, this residence, to make sure it has a very complimentary impact on this wonderful neighborhood. Jay?
Good afternoon, everyone. Jay Vallade from Mark Finley Architects. You can see my screen, so this is our site plan, as, as John has described it. What we've done is we've, we've paid attention to all of the building setbacks that were afforded in the R three zone, and we've set the, the primary residence right in the center of the lot. We have a drive, a U-shaped driveway that comes through, drive back underneath a little porchashare into an auto court with a two-car garage parking here. Main residence in the center with a covered terrace off to one side and a covered front porch along Sunny Home Drive. In the flag portion, as John described it, we've set our pool and a small poolhouse in the back of that, all again adhering to our setbacks and our building coverage that, or our, we're a little over on our lot coverage, which is why we're here. If I go to the next slide. This is what it looks like. This is our, our rendering using our Revit model that we have. So this is from Sunny Home Drive. It's a two, two and a half story by the time I count any extra space that would be in the attic. But most of the second floor is inside the roof of the house. The main floor is a, is all the living spaces and a two-car garage on the left there. Second floor is all bedroom spaces, including the, the primary bedroom and five other bedrooms. As, as John discussed, the Montellis have a growing family, and this wants to be their, their full-time house going forward. Elevation-wise, we have a shingle siding wood roof. We're debating between stone chimneys and, and brick chimneys at the moment, but as you can see, the scale is, is pretty discreet, given the allowable forty-foot height that we are allowed. Right now, at our midpoint of our primary roof, we are at twenty-three feet above the average grade. So it is, is pretty unassuming, but it would fit right into the neighborhood that's there. So I have my south elevation, which is the Sunny Home Drive side. This is below is the east elevation, which kind of cuts through. Sunny Home would be on my left-hand. Mariner's Way is back here on the right, and you can kind of see that we've got the house in the center. And then in the flag portion of the lot is where we have our pool and poolhouse. Poolhouse itself is about a hundred and sixty square feet. It's got about thirteen feet to the midpoint of the roof with a sixteen-foot overall to the peak.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jay. Appreciate that. Jay will be here if you have any questions. If you want to take that down, Jay, or whatever, that's fine. Great. So let me discuss the legal underpinnings of the application, if I might. As, as the board is aware, eight dash six, eight three provides that you have to make two findings. What is being proposed is not going to substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan, and number two, that there are factual elements concerning the property, which the law recognizes as constituting hardship for purposes of granting the variance. I cite to you today, as I often do, the Egan case, Egan versus the Zoning Board of Appeals, twenty con app five sixty-one. In Egan, it is held that the first part of the test is satisfied if the use is a permitted use in the zone and/or consistent with other uses in the area. In this case, obviously, there'll be no change. The property is zoned to be used as a single-family residence, and that's what it's going to be used for. We think that the design, we hope you will agree, is architecturally very, very beautiful. It's going to harmonize very well with the character of the neighborhood and will represent, in fact, a very significant aesthetic enhancement to the property benefiting the surrounding area. You've received, for your record and individual attention, a petition that Tom circulated to his adjacent neighbors, all of them having reviewed the plans, have spoken in favor and non-opposition to what he wants to do, noting it, I think, to be an attractive addition to the area. As I've said before, as far as adverse impact of the comprehensive zoning plan, again, the coverage increase here, notwithstanding the significant lot issues as arise under the regulations based upon the lot's shape, is only two percent. And we are going to comply with all other provisions of the regulations, including the FAR, which will be at twenty-four percent approximately, while under the thirty percent that's allowed, even taking into consideration the diminished lot area as defined. The hardship here is classic. It's the irregular shape of the lot that creates a proper basis and need for these variances. Again, cases I would cite to that point are Kelly versus the Zoning Board of Hamden, twenty-one con app five ninety-four, and Micklin during the, versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Windsor Lots, a Supreme Court case at one seventy-three, Connecticut, four twenty. In each of those cases, the court found that a proper basis for a hardship finding for purposes of granting a variance can arise based upon unique issues that arise from the unique shape of the lot. And in this case, it is, in fact, the, the factual basis for hardship is established due to the fact that the unique and peculiar shape of the lot directly implicates the ability to comply with the coverage requirements based upon the regulations' definition of lot area. And indeed, although every case that comes before you stands on its own, and there's no precedential value, I think it is of note and important to note that a variance was granted in November of two thousand and thirteen regarding fifty Sunny Home Drive that allowed an increase in lot coverage to twenty-four point four percent in order to construct open front porches. And the basis for that variance, as at the time, was again, the unique lot shapes occasioned by the factors that we discussed today. So we hope that you would agree that the standards for hardship have been addressed here. That's why we took a little extra time and attention to the unique lot shape issues and how these lot lines were drawn and how they implicate coverage calculation based upon the definition of lot area. So in summary, this new home for the Montelli family is a very attractive in design and will be an aesthetic enhancement to the neighborhood. It's going to provide a home for them for hopefully many, many decades as their family grows and, and can enjoy this wonderful town, this wonderful neighborhood. Again, the provisions of the regulations are all satisfied except the two percent coverage request, including FAR. And we hope you will agree that the standards of approval as required under section eight dash six have been complied with in this case based upon the unique lot shape and its implications for calculation of lot area and coverage. So myself or Mr. Vallade would be pleased to answer any questions you might have. We appreciate your attention and hope you might favorably consider this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. The board, have any questions? All right. Hearing no questions. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Mr. Montelli, I assume you're in favor. You don't have to, you don't have to answer that. That's obvious. Anyone else? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? That's Attorney Liskoff. Come on up.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Russell Liskoff, nine ninety-nine Broad Street, Bridgeport, Connecticut. One of my clients asked me to come here today and propose the application. I have a lot of respect for Attorney Fallon. Done a lot of zoning with him, been in court with him. This is not a case of hardship. This, when you talk about hardship, the lot is an interesting lot, but there's really nothing in the lot that makes it hard to develop it. The problem is, they want what they want, what they want to put there. They can certainly put a house there, shave the house down a little bit. They can put it on fifteen percent coverage. They don't need the two percent. The only reason why they want the two percent is because they want that kind of house there, not what the zoning is for. And your zoning regulations in and of themselves can never be a hardship. Just because you pieces of the lot doesn't count toward a, a square footage for calculation. That's your regulation. It can't be a hardship. Otherwise, every single property in the town of Fairfield would have hardship because your regulations impose burdens and duties on people to develop them. The law is pretty clear that so long as you can develop your lot, you can put a house there, it's in that R three zone, you can cover fifteen percent. They can have a house that covers fifteen percent. You just can't have a house to cover seventeen percent because you want it. Just because you want it doesn't mean you can have it. That, that doesn't make it an automatic hardship just because you want it. And so it's up to you to make a determination. I think you can see from the pictures they showed you, it's a lovely house. I, I don't dispute that. I think, I think you're doing a beautiful job. I think I can shave it down and comply with the zoning regulations, be it fifteen percent rather than the seventeen percent. Not hardship. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Liskoff steps down, good afternoon, Attorney Liskoff. I share the same respect for you. Could he, I did not hear, could he identify who he is representing here today?
My client asked me not to identify him because he's worried about being retaliated against.
So we have an unidentified client for the record. I'll address that in my remarks.
I think you need to identify your client because it has to do whether there's an appeal, there's an issue of whether it's a reason.
They, they do not want me to identify. They've been specifically told, please do not identify me for the event that I might receive retaliation.
Okay. I've never heard of someone retaliating against someone for opposing or...
I understand.
From this board. And I've been the chair for nine years, and I've been on the board for fourteen.
Just tell you my instructions. I can't go through the instructions.
And I understand instructions from clients as well, and that's fine. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Attorney Liskoff.
Liskoff, one other question, please. Without identifying the name of his client, which he is, can't do based upon his client's directions, can he confirm for the board in this record whether or not his client owns any property adjacent to, within a hundred feet, or within a half a mile of the subject property?
I did, I didn't manage it, so I can't, I can't tell you that, John. I'll, I'll be accurate for the board.
I don't know if that would be appropriate question for this board. It may be for another, another entity. But it wouldn't be coming from me. No more questions from you, Attorney Fallon, as to someone that's speaking. Okay? Are you all set?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. Anyone else in opposition? All right. Attorney Fallon, you get to address Attorney Liskoff's comments.
Yeah, well, this is unusual. We have a phantom objector. Again, every time I think I've seen everything that's happened or could happen, something else happens. Let me say this. We all respect the process that we are involved in here today, and we take it very seriously. And I agree, and the board certainly does, that everyone deserves the right to speak to the board about honest and legitimate concerns that may have, and they may have with regard to an application. But for the process to work, it has to be respected, and it cannot be abused. The circumstances one could speculate about, about the phantom client's concerns with regard to identifying himself. What I can assure the board, it has absolutely nothing to do with the application that's before you today. And it's interesting to me that Attorney Liskoff used the word retaliation because my understanding, based upon what I have been advised by my client, is that this anonymous opposition is based upon an act of retaliation or an attempted retaliation by Mr. Liskoff's client. But in any event, it should not in any way implicate the good faith and the hard work of this board. And I must say, in over forty years of practice, I think it's the most significant and disrespectful abuse of the public hearing process that I have seen. Whatever concerns Mr. Liskoff's clients may have with respect to the Montelli family, it is unfair to them, it is unfair to this board for them to attempt to abuse and manipulate the process by anonymously appearing to voice general unrelated animus towards this very worthy application. So I've made my speech about that, and I think it's disgraceful. And I think there is an attempted retaliation here, owing absolutely nothing to do with this application, but owing to Mr. Liskoff's client's anger about other unrelated matters that don't affect this board's decision. What I do know is that this application classically presents a case of hardship based upon the case law, based upon the lot size and its dimensions. And it's a beautiful home for a beautiful young family and is entitled to your support. And that becomes especially true when someone attempts on an anonymous basis to taint and disrespect this process. So I'd ask you to approve this application because it's legally deserving of and worthy of approval, and it also to send a message to Mr. Liskoff's clients and others that we won't tolerate of anonymous abuses of a process that you're spending so much of your volunteer time to make work. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. We're going to close the hearing on Sunny Home Drive. Going to close the public hearing. We're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll reconvene in five minutes for our working session. We're voting on each of the items that went forward today. And everything that was supposed to go forward went forward. So we're going to be voting on all eight items. Let's try it again. Call back quarter, Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, our working session. First item that we have is one eighty-six Hillside Road, addition of Marsh Real Estate. Attorney Fallon presented it. It's to, a variance to construct a second-floor addition. We were off the record, but I asked to entertain a motion to approve. Brian, so moved. I asked for a second. Terry seconded. Now let's open this up to discussion.
I'm going to go back to, I'm going to go back to my old standby. I think it's a reasonable request. I don't think that, that it's overreaching, and I think it well keeps with the neighborhood in which it's designed.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
I mean, this is not a zoning question, but if it's on septic, I don't know if the number of bedrooms is going to change.
It's not septic. I don't think it goes up that far. Stops at the, I believe it stops at the twin buildings right there.
Okay.
Those big buildings, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Let's bring it to the board. Katie?
Yes.
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 Yes. Number two, fifty-seven Brookdale Road. Ms. Fortuna presented the application. It's to construct a second floor to the existing detached garage. Entertain a motion to approve. Brian, sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie.
Welcome.
Discussion on this?
It's a very sort of sensitive addition to the town, so.
Bring it to, to the small garage. Remember, we had a couple garages on this. Garages with additions up.
Yes.
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 Yes. Number three, twenty-two Partridge Lane. Mr. Morales, he presented his own application to construct a one-story addition and detached shed. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thanks, Brian. Sir, a second? Sir, a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion? Discussion?
I'm having trouble reading the grid on this map. It's kind of blurred.
Number three?
Do you have the...
Yeah.
What I think I'm seeing is that...
You can't read the, yeah, you can't read that.
Yeah. So the...
You can't read, you can't read the grid online.
Right.
I have the same question. You can't read it. It's that big.
What do you want to know?
I would like to know or confirm that the lot size is compliant with regulations.
Is it non-conforming or is it conforming?
Yeah. The lot size is a touch bigger.
Bigger, okay. And it's got the 75 square?
It has 75 square.
Okay. So is there anything else that would indicate, is it a weird shape? No.
It's just a, just a rectangle.
Right. Okay. So I have no problem with the addition to the house, but the addition of the storage building, I do, because it pushes it over, you know, way over the limit for coverage. And they still have a garage, but they're using that. So I'm not in favor of this application.
The one thing though is they're still way under FAR, but their total floor, their total floor is just 24, and they could go up to, they could go up to 40%. It could be a lot bigger.
Well, no way.
Yeah.
Yes.
24.4% is FAR.
24.4, okay.
They could do 40. So that house could be a heck of a lot bigger.
It's just, I believe the direction in which they're building is...
Right. There's, yeah.
No, they're going from 20 to 25. That's what they're proposing.
Lot coverage.
Lot coverage.
Coverage, this is FAR total.
I'm not talking about FAR. I'm talking about coverage.
Well, yeah, no, I agree with that. What I'm saying is, I'm saying they're going over, they're going over on coverage by 5%, but they're under what they could do by 16%.
Right.
As far as total size.
And what they're building is not outside the scope of what that neighborhood is or anything else.
Well, I, you know, I know there's only a 5% difference between 25 and 20, but in fact, that's like a quarter again bigger than it needs to be, so...
They're spreading out as opposed to going up.
Right.
And so it's a ranch with this side addition with a shed in the back. Being that well under, they could do a very large addition in this area.
He bends up.
Yeah. I think this is more consistent with the neighborhood. Bring it to a vote?
Yes.
I'm in now.
Yes. That passes. Granted. Number four, 1499 Post Road, RK Fairfield. Mr. Nygaard presented it. This is to establish a cat bait permit. Nordic Fish is there, and they'd like to have a cat bait permit. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brian?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Discussion?
I understand the reason for the, for the way it's written, but I think the competition's better for the area. I think it's a good use for the property. I always need more places to eat.
It's probably been our history to approve things like this, so it makes sense.
1500, but it's...
Yeah. It's been so...
It's a long way.
All right. Bring it to a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Number five, 126 Old Post Road. Ms. Benir presented her own application. It's to expand the existing dormers, create the home office to the detached garage. Remember, we had an opposition letter. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Sir, a second?
Second.
Thanks. And discussion?
So all these objections from the Historic District Commission, I just put to one side because basically they're not zoning issues. Would you agree?
I understand. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
It's a lot of aesthetic issues.
Right.
No. You're right. And she brought this and followed the right thing. It wasn't the, you asked the right question. It wasn't a cart before the horse trying to sneak in, in my opinion.
No.
It was not. Yeah, it was not. Yeah. So bring it to a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Number six, 164 Applegate Road. It's the petition of the Tollers to construct two one-story additions in rear deck. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. All right. Discussion?
Weird.
Well, yeah, it jumps out at you. There's a lot here, but you look, they only have 15,000 square feet. They need 20,000. They have the watershed setback that takes a large portion of the one side of their property.
Right.
Looking at the math, so, you know, it makes, it makes that 15,000 even smaller, so I think it's reasonable.
Yes.
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 Yes? And for the record, she probably did much better than her husband. Number seven, 857 Bronson Road. Mr. Yocohn presented the application, and his neighbor actually have provided support as well. And this is to construct a one and a half story addition. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brian, second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Terry's a little slow.
Not moving.
He's hindered by his...
He hasn't moved, he hasn't moved one thing forward today either, and Terry's not allowed to move, so...
Guilty as per.
All right. Discussion?
Yeah. Here again, the coverage is way over what's permitted, and I understand you want a round four bedroom, but you didn't even talk about this additional great room that's another 315 square feet behind that. And, you know, I just think it's asking more than even what you need. And, you know...
The issue I asked is, it's supposed to have 43,000 square feet. They have 17.
Right. It's all about proportion, you know?
Oh, yeah.
But the nature of the variance requested is different from what that 43,000 square foot required. If they had it, we wouldn't be talking about this.
But they don't have it. So you have to look at the...
It's also, again, my standard fairly well stated, is not inconsistent with, when you drive around that neighborhood, when you look at it, it's not inconsistent with what exists in the neighborhood.
And it is legitimate hardship. It's hardship.
It's not going to impinge on anyone. It's not going to create anything, I love the word, abominable.
Well, I just think the hardship doesn't really translate to permitting half again, more than half again, coverage of what is permitted to that property.
All right. Bring it to a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes? Our last item is number eight, 248 Sunny Home Drive, petition, application on behalf of Mr. Montelli. Attorney Fallon presented this, and we also heard from Attorney Liskoff in opposition. This is to construct a new single-family home and a pool. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Brian, sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. I think Terry is shut out all the way around today, but, oh, no, he got it one second. All right. Discussion?
This is one of those weird-shaped lots that creates a legitimate hardship.
I think what they're building is going to be quite aesthetically pleasing. It's way more in keeping with what's in that neighborhood than what's there now. My only concern that I'll state on the record is there's a lot of tree life in that area, and I don't know if all that's coming down for the sake of the pool or not, but that wasn't part of the, either complaint or anything else.
Regarding the opposition, do we even know whether the client is a Fairfield resident?
No.
So...
No, we don't. Good point. And that's fine. I don't like the discussion about retaliation one way or the other, and I'm ignoring that. I'm looking at the facts of this, that you have property, 33,000 square feet, you can't count or use.
I don't know.
Almost what, 15% of that?
Forty-seven, or 5,500 square feet. If I take the house and I put it into what they can actually count and use, and what they could have counted and used, it's 14.2%.
Wow.
It's under it. All right? And I think it's, when you can't, you have property and you can't even count it to give you the benefit, and when you're talking about density, you know, it's their property. They have it.
Well, they're, they're building a pool house back there, so it's not like...
But they can't, they can't count it for their percentage.
I understand that. Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, it's getting used.
And so that shape is, the shape itself creates that hardship, in my opinion. Bring it to a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes? That concludes. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'll see you in April.